For the month of May. We will follow our agenda tonight with one exception, and I'm going to ask the town council if they will make an amendment. Under the item number seven, we have several cases tonight that involve public hearings, one of which is very detailed, and that's case number one. And Dale Holland is here to go over with us and our staff to talk about the changes therein. But in deference to our guest, April, who is here to request a zoning change, who has sat through all of that at the planning board meeting, we determine that it would be appropriate and also cut her a little slack from having to listen to it again before we got around to dealing with her case. So the chair would entertain a motion to alter the or change the agenda whereby items two and three under the number seven would be held first in that order, and number one would be the third item.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All right, any further questions? All in favor, aye. All right, thank you. So that being said, that takes care of our housekeeping. Now if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge, after which Councilman Poole will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, merciful and our wise God, we want to thank you for another opportunity to come as a council together to do your work in the business of Edington, North Carolina. We ask you to guide us. We ask that you will help us, give us the wisdom to do that which is right and to stand up for that which is wrong. We ask that you will bless each and every citizen of this town, help us to prosper, help us to do the things which will make Edington look good. We ask that you will continue to best the council, and we ask in your precious name that you will go with Marie, guide her, bless her, heal her, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. We have two presentations tonight, one from the soaring group with Rand Williams here, and he has come before us, or will come before us here in a minute, and talk about our employee health insurance plans and what options we have or don't have, looking at our next year. So Rand, welcome back. Nice to have you again, and we look forward to hearing your observations and recommendations.
Great. Turn that home and get started.
I think this will be the second year that we have some good news. There's some context behind it all, but about a month ago, First Carolina Care's original renewal request was about 4.8%. If you remember last year, they started around there, and we got them to 0%, and then we felt it was justified to ask for them to go to negative 2%. And this year, since we didn't go to the market last year, we felt like it was in y'all's best interest to look around, and ultimately, we let First Carolina Care know that because your claims have been very solid, really for the past two years now. And when we have two years of good data, it really helps make you marketable, and it helps us consider other options that maybe we wouldn't consider in the past, and looking at self-insured options and different ways to go about that. But the First Carolina Care partnership has been a great one. Their business model is stability, low increases, they might not always be the lowest, but they're the most consistent, and I think all the employees and family members have been very happy with them. So with all that in mind, even though we were going to market, they immediately went from 4.8% to 0%. I think it was kind of in hopes to convince us not to, but also because your claims were running well. And so when we still went out, we got really attractive offers from everybody around the 0% range where they had come down to. It's where Blue Cross was, it's where Aetna was, and United Healthcare was a little below, but not quite like they were a few years ago. Now that they do have all the hospitals and the ECU physicians group, they can't, you know, buy you at their pricing anymore, so they're coming back in line with everybody else. But the network's still not quite strong enough to consider seriously. On the other hand, Cigna did have an attractive offer, and it was for something called Level Funded. And I'll just tell you a little bit about the background of claims. If you see here, in 2016 and '17, coming off of a tough year with Blue Cross, your total claims were 436,000, and then '17 to '18, 441, and then the plan year to date, 282. But if we project that out for the rest of the 12-month period, maybe that comes in more like 425. But where the, we had a twist occur was, as soon as we were ready to get you everything Friday to prep for the meeting, First Carolina Care made us aware of two large claimants that either have occurred or will occur within the next couple of weeks or within the past few weeks. And so they were kind enough to not go backwards on their reduction, but at the same time, they're going to probably have some very, very significant claims that ultimately all go into the formulas and the calculation, not just for this renewal, but probably for the next one. And I asked Aunt Marie, I said, "I think some people know about her and her upcoming procedure being one of them, but I feel like we had to disclose that to Cigna, and they really do deserve the right to ask anyway, right before you come on board." And so where we are today is, they're more than likely going to reneg their offer. We can't say for sure, but it's a better chance that they will than not. And First Carolina Care has reaffirmed their 0% renewal for the same exact plans. And if we projected your claims out with the larger claims, you can kind of see what they might go north of 500,000, and then you can see maybe if those were resolved, how we might think what they should be in the next 12 months. But we really don't know. And the reason I point to the claim totals is the Cigna offer, first, just high level, this is the savings opportunity if they were to hold their offer. And they do a real good job customizing plans so they could match up pretty much everything exactly like First Carolina, except the little highlighted areas, they happen to, they don't have a prescription drug out-of-pocket max. Drug costs do go towards the total out-of-pocket max, and then they have telehealth, whereas First Carolina does not. And for everything else being the same, the savings opportunity to the town would be a little over $40,000 annually, and some, you know, reduced cost for employees and their payroll deductions. But we really just don't think this is going to be on the table, and I feel like we'll know probably within the next 48 hours. But knowing, you know, that we're here, I wanted to at least tell you a little more about what the offer is, and then see if, get your feedback on where you want to go from here. What the Cigna plan is, you would technically be self-insured, but it's something called Level Funded. And what Level Funded means is, you get the benefits of being self-insured without the risk. Big companies or bigger municipalities might be self-insured where you pay a fixed cost for your reinsurance, where it says, once a claim goes over $50,000 for one person, then the reinsurance pays, you know, up to millions of dollars for that one person. And you have reinsurance that once your total population hits a certain point, then all claims beyond that, so that's there to protect you, and then you pay fixed admin costs. And that's what is going on with the Cigna offer, except the difference is, with a bigger company you might be, or municipality, you would just pay the actual claims under 50,000 each month, whatever they may be. So it's really a cash flow challenge, and it's harder when you have 80 employees to really predict the risk. So the appeal of Level Funded is, it feels like fully insured, like what you're used to, you just pay the exact same employee, only employee spouse, employee child, and family rate, regardless of what your claims are. But at the end of the period, when you go to renew next year, they've projected a certain amount you're going to spend on claims. If you fall below that allotted amount, then ultimately you have a surplus that you get money back. And so you don't take on the risk, so the catch is, you only get 50% of the surplus back, and only if you stay with them. But in the first year of these programs, they have to set aside some money in case you leave them, because if you left, claims that incur, that are incurred in, say, the month of June, a lot of times don't get paid or filed till July and August. If you were to leave, they're on the hook paying those claims. So I wouldn't look at this as this great opportunity for a surplus, particularly in the first year, and knowing about the high claimant situations we have. But the worst case, if you have a really bad year, it's going to feel a lot like a bad year with whoever else, it's going to be reflected in your renewal increase, and you can negotiate and go to market and decide to leave. I would probably say Cigna's the best at this type of arrangement, they've been doing it the longest. A lot of the companies like Blue Cross, United have gotten in the game, but they don't quite know what they're doing yet, so they'll get the cost out of whack. But Cigna's a conservative company, and they really did want you, they threw in a $2,000 wellness credit that you could use for anything. And so it was feeling like I was going to have a hard time not at least recommending that we seriously consider this offer, but at the same time, there's something to be said for the stability with First Carolina Care. And, you know, our conclusions in all this, I won't read through each one of them, but knowing about the high claimants, and my, my main concern is, if they continue to hit First Carolina Care's books, they still do reserve the right to say, you know, "We're going to go back up to the 4.8%." So it's not very likely, but it's possible. And at the same time, Cigna's not likely to stay where they are, and I don't feel like holding off and waiting for a vote on the 28th makes a ton of sense. But I would ask you all, what your comfort level is? First, I'd ask you, is if the Cigna plan was available at the rate today, is it something you all would seriously consider moving on, or are you, do you see the value in First Carolina Care?
I think that's a tough question for them to answer.
Yeah.
Kind of, you know, we've advocated, and Tammy and I have said for the last few years, that the stability of First Carolina Care and for our employees and for their dependents has been a positive, and it has been something that we haven't had for a while. So it's, that, that is positive. But if there's significant, you know, 40, 50, $60,000 savings, you know, that would be, in my mind, something that the council should consider, you know, changing, changing firms, but, or, or coverage. But given what we know about these claims, these high claims, one of them which is going to be mine, you know, Rand said earlier today, "We probably need to try and lock in sooner rather than later." Because we did disclose to Cigna today, they had, they had an updated questionnaire, so we disclosed that, and...
Well, do you think they'll come back with a counter at a higher cost than what you have here before tonight, or do you think they'll just pull the offer completely off the table?
Yeah, I think they're more likely to either hold their offer, because they know they need to at least be where they are for you to seriously consider leaving, or it's more likely that they would just say, you know, "We don't want to buy that potential of the ongoing risk," and that they'll take a pass and try and hope for the best next year.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we've seen instances where these carriers do things that are a little illogical, and they're in cycles of trying to gain market share and just whatever goals they have internally, but Cigna's not really one of those. They're typically pretty conservative and consistent.
Another question for me would be, now that they know the additional claims that are forthcoming, do you think that if they did come back with an offer, that it would be greater than the $30,000 savings that you say we might get if we went ahead and joined with them?
Greater in terms of more savings?
No, I mean, if, if we went with them now without these two disclosures, we would be saving between $25,000 and $30,000, as I read this, right?
Uh, I think it's about $40,000.
Oh, okay.
But the problem is, we can't really take the Cigna offer because they require you to reauthorize, you know, a short list of health questions that you say, "Do you know of any of this?"
All right, well, we won't spend more time on that.
We just wanted to get ahead of it, and, you know, really...
I mean, what is your bottom line recommendation? You mean, you're an expert, we're not. What's your bottom line, what are you going to do?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think there's a lot of value in the stability and the fact that everybody's happy, and it's not an unfair offer, but it'll give us some negotiating capital in the future, although the renewal next year probably won't be as easy, not that this one was easy, but it's easier than most, because they're going to have those claims that are on their books. But they, you all have been profitable for them for two or three years, and so that goes into the calculation next year, even if they've lost a little bit. And that's their MOs, you know, single-digit increases, and they're promoting the long-term relationship and doing the right thing. So my recommendation would be for y'all to, or I would ask, or I would recommend, to stay with First Carolina Care and vote tonight, and go ahead and, you know, submit the formal sometime later this week, but I might just still update everybody. If for some reason Cigna, you know, came back and said, "We're going to hold our offer," y'all could decide at that time if we need to postpone and have another session to bring it back. But I think tonight, the recommendation, as things stand, would be to stay with First Carolina Care, and you don't have to bring it back up if you don't want to.
But we would save more money going with Cigna, is that what I'm hearing?
If it were to hold.
If they hold what they're holding. The offer was at this point.
Well, I'll just throw out my two cents. I mean, we've, we've done extremely well by our current provider. There's a uncertainty in the air now as to what future offers will be from either company.
Yeah.
Once they factor in these two claims that were, that have been revealed to them, given that, and in fact, this company has, I don't know about bent over backwards, but they are of a mindset, it appears, and you just confirmed it, Rand, that they want to build a long-term relation. So therefore, they are working with their insurers to foster that. And up and running now on something that has a lot of uncertainty in it, to me, would not be a wise move.
And all the employees are happy at this time with the way it is, as I understand it.
Tammy, I'm sorry. The, your general sense is that the employees are satisfied and happy with First Carolina?
Councilmembers, anybody have any further questions? Is there anything else you want to convey to the group?
No, I mean, I think that would be about it on the medical. I have a couple of things to talk about on dental, but that won't take very long at all. Y'all can vote on medical first, or do it all at once. Would you want me to show you the dental first?
Well, I get some sense of urgency on the medical, so we'll go ahead and vote on that now.
Yeah, sounds good.
Maybe we can cover it in the next 48 hours.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Um, council chair would entertain a motion to continue our relationship, as was just described by, by Rand. I don't know that needs to have anything further in it than that.
I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. To continue our relationship as has been enjoyed over the past couple of years. Any further questions or comments? All right, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, another? Very good, all right, we got that one.
All right, so our dental insurance has been with Sun Life for a long time now, and they've handled some of the other voluntary programs, and they've done a good job. Their dental's just crept up every year, and it crept up a lot more this year, and we had more people interested than last year. And I think we wanted to be sure, it's a high-quality carrier like Sun Life, matching the benefits as close as possible, and whether or not we could make anything a little bit better. And so Guardian, who happens to be the company who handles life insurance already, was the lowest bidder, and one that we do a lot with, so we have a high comfort level with them paying claims the way they're supposed to, and having really good service experience. Dental networks in this area aren't really, they don't exist much unless you go to Greenville or at least a good ways away from here. So it's going to handle out-of-network claims the same, it bases it on the 90th percentile, the average of what the dentist charges in this area. You might see a little difference in their 90th percentile versus Sun Life's, they don't publish it, it's third-party driven, but they, they tend to argue whose is better, but they won't tell us, you know, in the zip code, here's a schedule. But I would imagine within a couple of dollars, it might be a little better here or different there. The only negative is highlighted in red where the Sun Life plan has the $50 deductible, doesn't apply to preventive services like cleanings, but the basic or major services, you have to pay a $50 deductible before you get the co-insurance. And that's the way it is with Guardian, but Sun Life had a cap of two per family, and Guardian is three, just by default, we couldn't make it two, or we would have. But when it comes to their annual maximum, they've got a neat rollover benefit, so if somebody doesn't use a certain percentage of their thousand, they get more added the next year, and it can build up on a nice schedule. And then, anything else highlighted, they do a little, little bit better, but on fillings, this is actually a pretty big deal, because we see this as like the number-one claim complaint. Most, all dentists now want to do the, you know, we say composite, you can think tooth-colored fillings in your back teeth, but the insurance industry wants to only pay if it was an amalgam at a cheaper cost, so you think you got an 80% benefit, but it's of a smaller number. And Guardian will pay those at the actual bill cost, so they've kind of come into the 21st century a little bit quicker. And really, the, the rates speak for themselves, you can see it's, you know, a decent amount of savings for the town and for employees, dental dollars not being what, obviously, medical. Something else really neat that Guardian does is if, if an employee has the dental plan, regardless of whether their children are covered or not, they've partnered with basically a college tuition resource, so that particular person can get $2,000 immediately or on a schedule, $2,000 a year, and it accelerates if you stay with Guardian for a long time for their kids to help to go to college. And there's a certain list of the eligible schools, and they tend to be the smaller private schools, because they're the ones that participate in this program, because they want enrollment, so they're willing to have these scholarship dollars in play. And so it builds every year, and ultimately, if you left Guardian, however many years later, it doesn't go away, they can still have those dollars, even if their kids aren't going to college for 10 or 15 more years, they just have to be used on the eligible colleges on the list at that time. So it's a neat, really neat program, and it could be a, a big difference for someone. So nothing else like it in insurance, so I think it's a good thing. But that's, my, my recommendation is to move to Guardian for dental. Do y'all have any questions or concerns?
Can you show us the list of colleges in North Carolina?
Yes, let's see, so I can go to ones out of North Carolina, just the same, but the North Carolina list will be right at the middle bottom of the screen. I'm sure everybody recognizes most of those.
Nice.
But the key is, we got to make sure employees register for the program. A lot of people think they have it, but they never registered, so when they become enrolled in dental, they take five minutes, put in their info, and they're done. Any concerns, questions about the recommendation? And the Guardian life insurance is on a two-year rate guarantee. We did chop it out, but, you know, within a penny or two, everybody was about the same, so it helps to consolidate some of the other lines to help with future increases as well. So that's all I have on the non-medical to share.
So they would need to approve the dental and the life?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Very good. Here are no questions of Rand, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the dental and life plans as presented.
So moved.
Motion in a second, does that affect any further questions or comment? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, aye? All right.
Thank you all for your time this evening, and thanks for your continued...
Thank you for your good work.
I want to take all the credit. First Carolina Care's done, done a good job over the past few years, and so have your, so have your people with the biometric screenings and taking care of their health, I mean, that's, I think, really paying off and seeing where you are now versus four, five years ago.
You still get the credit for introducing them to us.
Hey, I'll take it.
Yeah, me too, three years running, that's pretty nice.
Yes, sir. I can't tell that story very often.
All right, thanks a lot, Rand, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Rand.
Before we get to our next presenter, I missed an item on our agenda, I failed to ask for approval of the minutes as they were presented in your package.
So moved on the minutes, Mayor.
Second. Motion in a second on the minutes, any further questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? All right, thank you, we're back up the street. Continuing on with our tradition established here a few years back, whereby we hear from organizations in the community that this town council has chosen to assist with financial help during the course of their operations because of our belief that it brings overall benefit to our community. Tonight, we will hear from Destination Downtown Edington, and that annual report will be given by our executive director, Jennifer Harris. Jennifer?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm always excited to come before you and talk about downtown. I said I don't love public speaking, but I'm always happy to talk about my family in downtown, so, two things I know a lot about. But I'm happy to do this presentation tonight, and good, everything's working. First of all, I'll give you just a brief overview of Main Street. I know some of you've heard this many times, but the Main Street program began in 1979 in North Carolina, was one of the pilot programs. You can look up the road a little to Tarboro, they were one of the first Main Street communities in North Carolina. All this was really founded by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and later, actually in recent years, it's become kind of its own national Main Street center, and that's what Kelton Dixon sits on the National Board, and we're very fortunate to have that relationship. In North Carolina, it is run through the Department of Commerce, and so we have a state director, Liz Param, who was actually here a couple of weeks ago, and now there are 65 Main Street communities in North Carolina. If you compare that to South Carolina, I think South Carolina has 10, so that just shows you how strong the North Carolina program is, it's very well respected on the national level. Main Street, pretty much we use our historic buildings as a catalyst for economic development. So we use tax credits, we use preservation-based design methods, and all sorts, all sorts of things, use our historic buildings to increase vitality and economic development in the downtown. We call it a four-point approach, which is organization... We call it a four-point approach, which is organization, design, permission. They call it economic restructuring, but here, I feel like we don't have to restructure. We're very, very fortunate to have the bustling downtown that we have, so I call it economic development here. But organization is just like our board of directors, our relationship with the town, our relationship with the chamber. Design, we have a design committee and so if someone applies for a facade grant, it comes to the design committee at the same time that it goes before the Edington Preservation Commission. It's just kind of checks and balances to make sure that we're making the right architectural choices in downtown. Promotion, I'll probably talk a lot about promotion tonight because that's the fun part of the four points, but that's our events and our marketing for downtown. We have won several Main Street awards over the years. A lot of these are community-wide awards. The Lighthouse, for example, was definitely not solely a Main Street project, but I think we all held hands and worked together and the state director was here, like I said, recently and she said that she feels that might be one of the best projects done in the state and they're getting ready to celebrate 40 years and they're looking at the 40 best projects. So I hope that the Lighthouse will be named as one of those. We shall see. This is just a list of our current board members. This was one of our strategic planning sessions where we all had breakfast with several of the state Main Street folks and we do an 18-month plan of work and so we make sure that we stay on target and we do this with the state. Nelson Spear is our current chair and he's a wonderful chairperson and we are very fortunate to have all of these board members. They volunteer their time, their knowledge. They're a very active and hard-working board and I'm really proud of how this board has grown over the years and what they've been able to accomplish. Highlights, I get really excited when I get into the numbers. The state requires us to turn in reports every year and then we add the statistics up and when you look at it, it's overwhelming. I mean, we are two and a half blocks of downtown here. We are very small downtown and we've had over $13 million in public and private investment and for two and a half blocks, that's a pretty big number. 30 facade enhancements, many of those have applied for facade grants through DDE and have been awarded. That's a matching grant program that we offer. And then I think the most astonishing number is a net gain of 22 businesses. I think so often, me included, we focus on those that close, but we have had a net gain of 22 new businesses in downtown. And I think a lot of that, if you look, when you're walking down Broad Street, we've had businesses pop up upstairs now, they're going down the side streets. Our downtown footprint is really starting to expand, so we're very happy about that. Before and afters, I mean, y'all, I forget how far we've come. You can see on the left, that was the Credit Union, that was later the Edington Antique Gallery. The little picture on the left, we partnered with UNCG, their design school. We did that through the Main Street program and the preservation students actually did that rendering as a suggestion for the property owner. They worked closely with the State Historic Preservation Office to make sure that any changes would be eligible for preservation tax credits. Then went through our design committee, they got a facade grant, they applied for tax credits, they went through the Preservation Commission. I think this is just a really good example of what happens when everything's done correctly. And this slide was actually used at the North Carolina Main Street Conference and I perked up and I thought, oh my goodness, you know, like I said, I even forget how far we've come, but I think that's a beautiful example of a facade restoration in downtown. And now that is Sugar Bears, in case you're wondering which building that is. Just another example, I think this got more hits on our Facebook page than anything else we've posted. This is Byram's and we forget that it just used to be cream and a little color went a long way and I know they've gotten a lot of compliments on their new facade. Events, well, that's the fun part. I think a lot of people look at Downtown Edington and they think that, you know, we hand out candy and we have Boogie on Broad and we do, but there is a bigger picture to all of that. If you've been to Downtown Edington during trick-or-treating, you know that there are tons of people that come to that event that do not live in Chauvin County. And my hope is that they see what we have and they come back. I know several of our merchants have really tried to target their customers through this. I know Sound Feet Shoes last year gave out coupons with their candy, so people would come back and shop. Thought that was a really good idea. This is something new we did this year. We did a sip and shop downtown. It was like kind of a pre-Christmas open house event. We happened to have travel writers in town this night and it was pouring down rain and I was so nervous. I thought, this is going to be a huge flop. We've spent all this money on marketing because we sent out, I think, 500 postcards, convinced the merchants that this was going to be a great thing and then it poured down rain and I thought, oh no, this is not good. I turned the corner and you could not find a parking spot in downtown Edington. The stores were full, these are just a few pictures. It's really hard to take pictures of people shopping, but it was so successful and the merchants were thrilled. You recognize people in there?
The little bomb on the far left.
Good, good. So this is something we'll definitely do again. It was really successful and the merchants were thrilled, even though they stayed open later. I mean, sometimes that's a gamble, but it went really well. Christmas tree lighting and flotilla, you are all aware of these events. The mayor magically lights her beautiful new Christmas tree and the school children sing and then we've added the boat parade and this has really just become a tradition in our downtown. I mean, look at all the people on the bottom-left slide, it's just amazing. I think we started out with just a handful of people coming and it has grown and grown and grown. And this year, I had several tour buses calling me saying they were coming and they wanted to know where to park, so I think that is a sign of a healthy, vibrant downtown event. Boogie on Broad, this was our biggest year yet. This is one of our fundraisers.
I wish you could do it twice a year.
I do too.
It brings everybody together and it really does.
I know, I wish we could too. We did try. Originally, we were doing it twice a year, but it's really, it's an expensive event to put on and it takes pretty much every single town department, so thank you, town, for your support. You see, we always include the town logo because we have the electric department doing lights and the police department making sure everybody's behaving and the fire department making sure that the ambulance can get through by the tent and that our tent has all the regulatory measures in place in case of a fire, but it's great, it's grown. And again, people have really started traveling here for that and we do it in conjunction with either the easels in the garden or pilgrimage, so that hopefully the people that come to do those events will spend the night. So we're trying to, as Nancy Nichols always says, get heads in beds and I think that's been successful too. I feel like every year, there are more and more people I don't recognize, so that's a good sign. Wedding bells, I always have to say, the mayor looks good and green, it's like my favorite little comment. This is our current wedding bells poster. You can still vote, wedding bells is through the end of the month. If you're not familiar with this promotion, which I hope you all are, when you shop or dine in Downtown Edington, you can assign your points or dollars toward one of the couples on the poster and the couple at the end of the promotion that gets the most points gets $1,000 downtown dollars. They can spend them anywhere in downtown. We're lucky this year, we have Kenan Bass as our intern and she has been wonderful going around and collecting the ballots and sorting and then our committee actually tallies at the end. But every year, we take all of the ballots and we add it up and it's usually between $200,000 and $300,000. So we know that it's a great promotion. We won a state award because they were so impressed that we could actually say dollar for dollar, you know, what was spent during that promotion. And there's a lot more that's spent. I mean, I go in and forget to vote and it's, I'm in charge of the promotion, so that's just a drop in the bucket, but it's really positive. We've heard so many stories where brides or maybe their father said they needed a wheelbarrow and they were going to Lowe's and she said, no, you're not, you're going to Byram's or Sears because I need the points. So we know there are good examples of people thinking twice before they shop out of town during this promotion. Then, this is our downtown commercial. I hope you've all seen it. They are playing it at the Taylor Theater before movies. I don't know how to hit play on this remote. Do y'all know how to get up? If not, we can... Thank you, Elizabeth. I think you have volume.
Is this one with Jim Blunt?
Yes.
Okay.
Sally Rhodes.
Yes.
Thank you. Can you hear it? It's okay if we can't, it's not as loud from here. I should have checked it earlier. It's okay, we can just... That's okay. I meant to check that earlier. Sorry, but this has been great. Mayor and I showed this at the National Main Street Conference and people just loved it and it was really inexpensive to produce. We found a gentleman out of Greenville and I think he just really loved Edington. He came back like three times and we did this on a Saturday morning and the first time I saw it played in the theater, people clapped and it was just so awesome and I don't think they knew I was in there, but it was really great. And if we can, it'll be great and if not, we can just move to the next slide. It's okay. Is it loud? Okay, well, I'll just tell you the premise of the commercial. They take the dollar and then Mr. Blunt takes it with Sally Rhodes. Can you hear it? No. And then they pay the dance teacher and then the dance teacher goes and she buys us plows and then they go and they go to Vons and they buy some jewelry and then they go to Christian Bookseller and it ends up at the movie theater and it talks about the dollar recirculating in the community. If you do want to see it, it's on our Facebook page, Destination Downtown on Facebook, so you can see it there, but we're really proud of this. I thought it was a really neat piece, something I haven't seen another community do, so I'll just go to the next slide. Y'all can watch this and it should be on our website too. If it's not, I'll put it there. You get the idea. It's really great. It just encourages people to shop locally. I think sometimes it's, we kind of preach to the choir as far as shop local, shop local and this is really reaching an audience and I think presenting it in a way that really hits home. Well, it's almost over, so we'll just watch it till the end. She's gonna buy... It's $5, it's not a dollar. But at the end, they say, sit back, relax and enjoy your popcorn. That one is the one they play at the theater, which I think is really neat. So you get the idea. And then, another marketing promotion we did this year. It's kind of a play on, obviously, Penelope Barker and the strong history of Penelope here and Alex Evans came up with this. It started here to keep it here, support local. I love the hashtag, #PenelopeWouldAgree, but we did this on social media. It was really a social media campaign where we had these tiles that we would post every week or so reminding people of why you should shop locally. Got a lot of feedback from those people, really, really enjoyed it. So we were proud of that as well. The high school, obviously, that is something that has been in conversations all over town. Everybody's saying their opinion of where the high school should be and what should happen. The Downtown, Destination Downtown Edington Board of Directors feels very strongly that the high school should remain in Downtown Edington for many, many reasons. They've passed a resolution as such and we are looking at some other ways that, whether it be partnering with the town, with the marketing study or some other things, to just show data as to why it's important to keep the high school downtown. When the National Board was here, just a week or so ago, Ed McMahon, who is world-renowned planner, he really latched onto this high school project and he shared an article and it's entitled, "Why Johnny Can't Walk to School." And I posted it on our Facebook page, Destination Downtown Edington, and I encourage you all to read it. It's really good food for thought when we're talking about whether to rehabilitate or relocate, but our board feels very strongly about this. Taylor Theater, I know we are all celebrating its success and the many local folks who have invested in this theater project. Destination Downtown Edington is trying to help with the facade portion of the project. It's a historic terracotta facade, which is very unusual in eastern North Carolina and we've been talking to preservationists all over the state and actually all over the East Coast. We actually had a gentleman from Maryland come in and look at the facade and give us some recommendations and we believe we've found someone out of Raleigh that can help us really just devise a plan for how to, if we can't restore it all the way, at least to secure where it is and make sure it's safe and preserved for future generations. And then I love the lights in the alley, that was something we did. And next to Jean Brown's facade, I think this received the most lights on Facebook. So we're going to try to do some more of this in downtown, so stay tuned for that. And the National Main Street, I know I mentioned that the board was here, which was such a treat and really, a really big deal for our town. I mean, Councilman Dixon, correct me, but I don't think they've ever been anywhere as small as Edington. And you feel free to elaborate on that because...
It was great to have them here. I mean, they're the national fault leaders and all of this and having them in Edington was just wonderful and the people of Edington, wine and dine them and went and picked them up at the airport and it was just a really wonderful three days and I appreciate all the help and job from everybody.
I think it's a real honor for Edington to have you, Councilman Dixon, the mayor, participating at the national level. Fantastic, way to go.
Well, thank you. There's a picture of us on the left, speaking at the national conference in Seattle, which was great. I think one of my favorite parts of that presentation was at the end and just the questions. People were so impressed that a town of 5,000, that we've been able to do what we've done and then also on social media to see our likes. I mean, it was like people in the audience following us have gotten several emails after the event saying, tell me again about the theater, like, how did you do that? It's been really, really encouraging. And then in the middle, that is of course Amy and then Patrice Frye, she is our National Main Street Director. I mean, y'all, these are kind of like the rock stars in my field. I was really excited to have them here, totally just on cloud nine the whole time. And then we did have a public meeting Friday morning and you can see we had a nice crowd at the newly renovated Arts Council, which was nice to celebrate that space as well, but Liz Param with the state joined the National Board and they did a forum and you can see mayor, the back of mayor there, he's talking. But that was great and the high school came up in that meeting as well.
How can you tell that was me?
Because I recognized the jacket. It was the jacket.
The better sign.
No, but Destination Downtown, we could not be here without the town of Edington and we appreciate your support and we are so grateful that you, as a council, you understand that a healthy downtown is really a sign of a healthy community and you know that when we're looking to recruit bigger businesses and taking them out to the industrial park, they still want to see downtown. I think everybody drives through downtown first and y'all know that and you get that and we appreciate it so much. And then I always have to leave with my favorite quote, "No place stays special by accident." And that was what Ed McMahon, who was here a couple of weeks ago at the National Main Street Board, that is what he always says and I told him that I quote him every time I give a presentation, but it's so true. None of this happens by accident and all of you sitting up there and all of you actually in the audience too, everyone makes Downtown Edington special, whether you shop there or whether it's supporting Destination Downtown, but we appreciate it. So thank you all and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council members?
Jennifer, new question, but I think it's, you do a remarkable job and we really appreciate what you do under your leadership. It has grown and everything looks great. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you all.
I've been to several conferences with Jennifer. She's a rock star. On state and, you know, in the state meetings, everybody knows her name, knows where she's from and they know her in the National Main Street, on the National Main Street platform too. They know her name and who she is and they know where she's from, so we're so lucky to have somebody with all this talent in Edington. Do us proud, Jennifer.
It takes everybody, so thank you all so much.
You are welcome. Okay, now we're ready to move into our public hearing portion of the agenda tonight. As we voted earlier, we're going to move case number one down to the third slide, which means we're going to start with case two and I will ask Elizabeth if she would please introduce that subject to us and walk us through the staff report.
Chief, maybe just leave the backlight on and then...
Chief, maybe just leave the backlight on and then um... Murray, what's best for your video?
Either way.
Okay. I think just leaving the backlight on is good. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and thank you, Council. Um, uh, as you said, Mayor, our first case tonight is from the Garmins and they have a kind of double-sided application before you tonight. They're first requesting a text amendment of the Unified Development Ordinance to add miscellaneous retail sales not otherwise specified as a conditional use in the neighborhood commercial category. And then, subsequent to that, they are asking for a conditional use rezoning of the property at 1111 North Oakham Street um, to conditionally rezone it from R5 residential to neighborhood commercial for the operation of an overstocked items resale shop. And Ms. Garmin is here with us this evening, so after I finish going over my staff report, she's able to, to speak with you as well. To give you some highlights of the staff report, rather than read the entire entirety of both of them, I've got a bit of a presentation, but you do all have the reports in your packet and they should be entered into the record. So, your applicants again are April and Craig Garmin. The property owner is Pearl Smith and the subject property is 1111 North Oakham Street. The property owners, surrounding property owners have all been notified. They also were able to see an advertisement in the newspaper of this meeting and the property has been posted with a sign, so all our advertisements requirements have been met. Um, again, they're requesting a text amendment to Article 10, permissible uses of the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 146, Table of permitted uses, um, to allow miscellaneous retail sales not otherwise specified in the neighborhood commercial zoning district, as well as a conditional use rezoning from R5 to neighborhood commercial for the operation of an overstocked items resale shop. Um, it's in North Edington. You probably are very familiar with it. It's about a, um, that is a wrong note there, about 4.49 acres. It's much smaller than that, but it's across the street from the Boys and Girls Club lot and kind of diagonal from Walker Drive on the corner of Oakham Street and Third Street and Johnston Street also backs up to it. It's currently zoned R5 residential and um, the existing land used is residential with a cinder block commercial building. So, you can see the aerial photo there of the property and you can note the buildings right in the corner. This is our existing land use map and you can see the existing land use classification is starred there. The existing zoning and land use that's surrounding, to the north, we have residential as well as some commercial properties. There are, is a vacant unbuilt lot, some R5 residential, um, single-family homes and existing auto garage here on Oakham Street to the, to the north. To the south, it's zoned residential and also is existing single-family homes, so land use is residential. To the east, there's a vacant or unbuilt lot. There's also some industrial warehouse, so um, the existing parcel, Boys and Girls Club, and then you know, the self-storage warehouses. To the west, um, the property is zoned residential and it's used for residential purposes, existing single-family homes. Zoning history. You guys may recall that there have, there was Pearl's Peace Goods Store, I think there years ago, so a fabric store originally. Um, after that, special use permits have been issued for a church in 2014 and for a beauty salon in 2003. Um, the applicable regulations of your Unified Development Ordinance are Article 4, Permits and Final Pla- Approval, and Article 20, Amendments. Municipal water and sewer services are available for the property. It's located within the town limits. Town protection services are available. The subject property has frontage on North Oakham Street and Johnston Street and it's currently developed with an existing uh, commercial building. Our land use plan categorizes this property as medium-high-density residential. Uh, you can see that that occupies about 20% of the town's planning jurisdiction, the medium-high-density residential, um, and it delineates lands where the predominant land use is higher-density, single-family residential and multifamily development and supporting um, public infrastructure and institutional land uses. Your land use plan also gives you some goals relevant to projects such as this, um, to promote economic development. So, your goal E3 is to develop a strategy for expanding entrepreneurship opportunities in and around downtown Edington. Goal E5 is to ensure that the town's development ordinance is conducive to emerging economic trends such as telecommuting and cottage industry entrepreneurship. You have specific policies set out to address those goals. Um, policy E4, the town encourages entrepreneurship and the opening of new locally-owned businesses, particularly retail establishments and restaurants. And policy E6, the town is supportive of cottage industry entrepreneurship and will put into place standards that require cottage industries that may have adverse effects such as noise or traffic on neighboring properties to mitigate these effects. So, here you can see the portion of the Unified Development Ordinance that would be modified by this text amendment. Your table of uses would be um, modified to include in the neighborhood commercial category miscellaneous retail sales not otherwise specified as a conditional use. As y'all know, that requires Planning Board review and council approval, any conditional use. The Garmins have requested this uh, text amendment and it's going to be inserted, if approved, into Article 10, Section 146. Uh, the staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendment based on the review of Article 20, Section 325. And um, the Planning Board met on April 1st, 2019 and unanimously recommended that you all approve the text amendment. Now, to, a little bit more specifically to the actual use of the property. Your future land use map, um, which is this map here below with the blue stars covering the property, the subject property. It identifies this parcel and the surrounding area as suitable for medium and high-density residential and supporting public and institutional use. Miscellaneous retail sales not otherwise specified will be, if you approve the text amendment process, are permitted through the conditional use permit process in the neighborhood commercial district. Staff does find the proposed use to be in conformity with the land use plan. And then finally, um, the ultimate issue before council, when reviewing any conditional use rezoning or any proposed zoning changes as associated with this particular project, um, is that it advances the public health, safety and welfare as compared to the existing zoning and that the development in its proposed location, one, will not endanger the public health or safety, two, will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, three, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, and four, will be in conformity with the land use plan, thoroughfare plan or other plan officially adopted by the town council. Staff does find the proposed use to be in conformity with the Edington Show One Land Use Plan and all applicable regulations of the UDO and all staff's concerns that are applicable to this development have been identified. We offer the following um, conditions as consideration as you review the project. One, no other miscellaneous retail sales not otherwise specified commercial, I should say, use shall be permitted without reapplication to the Planning Board and Town Council for an additional modified conditional use permit. Two, days of operation shall be Monday through Saturday with public hours being 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Three, all parking for patrons must be accommodated on-site. And here in the highlighted portion is the section that um, the Planning Board did suggest uh, be modified. It originally read as shown on the submitted site plan for development. They ask that patrons enter from North Oakham Street and exit on Johnston Street. I will mention that you received in your packet an alternate proposal from Ms. Garmin that shows the parking primarily on the Third Street side of the building with the handicap only being the ones that are in front on North Oakham Street, so that cars can turn on Third Street and park um, next to the building and then when they leave, they will back out onto Third Street and either go towards uh, Oakham or go towards Broad Street. And so, that would be something that she's gonna possibly speak more to tonight, but you all would need to consider whether you want to go with the Planning Board's, the original language, the Planning Board's suggestion, or maybe change it if you feel Ms. Garmin's suggestion is more suitable. And finally, all details and improvements like signage shall be installed and constructed according to the UDO requirements. Again, the Planning Board met and heard this case on April 1st and unanimously recommended um, approval of the application with the staff recommended conditions and the modification to the parking number three is indicated above. So, like I said, Ms. Garmin is here and I'm either happy to entertain questions now or let you hear from her and then speak to you in a little bit.
Very good. Thank you, Elizabeth. Ms. Garmin, please. We'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. My name is April Garmin and my husband, Craig Garmin, and I would like to open a store at 1111 Oakham Street. Uh, previously, the property was used as a church and fabric shop. We have come to an arrangement with the current property owner, who is Pearl Smith, to lease the property through the remainder of the year with the potential to buy it from her. As I stated, we would like to make the property into a retail store. We buy liquidation, overstock and clean returns from stores such as Walmart, Target, Lowe's and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. We have a wide variety of items for sale such as kitchenware, bedding, tools, toys and small furniture. We have spoken to the residents who surround the property on Johnston Street and also to the residents at the Housing Authority and we've had positive feedback from everybody that we've spoken to. One concern which was brought up at the Planning Board meeting was that there would be a large amount of traffic backing out onto Oakham Street. What we would like to do to ease this concern is have the front of the property be limited to handicap parking only to minimize traffic backing out onto Oakham Street. The main customer parking would be on the right side of the building, which lets out onto Third Street. The side of the building has enough parking for at least five cars. There is also room on the back of the property for overflow parking and that would let out onto Johnston Street. We will, of course, put up signage on the side of the building to make this clear for everyone. Um, to the left of the building is an empty lot right now and we would like to just um, kind of keep that as a family-friendly area, um, put out some benches and on nicer weather, possibly have an outdoor market out there. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak and we hope to become part of Edington's small business community.
Council members, anybody have any questions of the applicant, Ms. Garmin? Thank you very much. We appreciate your interest in the community.
Thank you, sir.
Right. Okay, now we've heard from our staff report and we've heard from the applicant. Is now the time to open the floor for public comment and you would be commenting relative to the requested change for the, the zoning ordinance as was just discussed, so with that bit of instruction, unless I need to add more to it, is that good? I will open the floor for public comment. The podium is yours. We ask that you come to the podium and...
I just have a quick question for clarification. This is just the, for the first part of the vote, to change the zoning, not about the application.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is for the text amendment that would allow.
Okay.
Right, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay, floor is open for public comment. At the podium, please step forward and tell us who you are. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing relative to the text amendment changes just was discussed and call for a vote. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to approve the text amendment as it was presented?
Submit.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to that effect. Any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, step one. Thank you very much. Now, we will move to case nineteen dash one, which is item three. Is there any further report that we need from you on that?
The only other thing I would say is you, in your, um, in your packets, also received a sample land use plan consistency statement and just be reminded that whatever decision you make, you have to, at the end, adopt a consistency statement either with an approval or a denial.
That's for all rezoning, right? Pretty much.
Yes.
We left that out more time ago.
Nearly so, yes.
Nearly so. Okay. Okay, with that being said, the chair would also entertain a motion for the conditional use rezoning application as presented.
Time to be an opportunity for public comment?
Excuse me?
Will you open the floor?
Oh, yeah, I will.
I think you have to administer the oath for, because this is quasi-judicial.
Yes.
So, you need to administer the oath for the...
Yes, okay. As was mentioned in our um, staff report, since this is a conditional use um, permit that's being sought here this evening, uh, the town council has to vote on four specific items um, separately. And as they are brought forward, you will see they're very self-explanatory and um, but before we get to that, if there's anyone who would like to speak either in support of or in opposition to uh, the request for this conditional use permit, would you please stand and I would issue a brief oath to you. On the subject before you tonight, uh, do you promise to tell the truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. All right, the podium is yours. And if anyone else hears something along the way that triggers a thought that you would like to talk about as well, just stand up and we'll do that all over again, okay?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to take a few minutes and point out that the Oakham Street is a major corridor to the downtown area of Edington and to the police station. And that this North Edington neighborhood is supposed to be a residential R5 neighborhood, but um, somehow, commercial keeps creeping into the neighborhood. There are already non-conforming businesses on Johnston Street in this section of the neighborhood and one is growing into a larger and greater eyesore with this repair and um, there doesn't seem to be any oversight there. Previous businesses at this location, which Elizabeth mentioned, um, there were limited hours of operation for the Peace Goods Store. She was Monday through Friday, 10 to 4, and then the hairdresser was by appointment only. And the church was only Sundays and Wednesdays. Uh, I want to also point out that on Johnston Street, there are no public sidewalks. It is just a street. Um, and there is no sidewalks on Third Street as well, so adding traffic to this limited neighborhood is going to create a significant safety concern. And the idea of an overstocked store, which um, I'm not really sure exactly what their plans are, but it brings to mind large shipping containers and storage trailers, um, which would be very problematic in our neighborhood. It would be areas for vermin to collect and increased places for people to hide and to hang out, neither of which are conducive to a safe residential neighborhood. So, I would ask that you restrict and prohibit the use of outside trailers and storage and/or storage containers on this application. I would also ask that you restrict the hours of operation so as to be more conducive to the residential neighborhood. I would ask you also to consider amendments for this application and this business if it were going to be your new neighbor in your... it were going to be your new neighbor in your neighborhood. And I want to thank you for your time and your consideration, and I want to thank you for your continued support in helping to make North Edenton a better, safer community. Sorry, thank you. Oh, and by the way, I'm Lori Ann Curtin, and I live at 307 First Street, for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori Ann. Is anyone else who would like to speak relative to this? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and move on with the voting that we have to consider, the four items. I do have a question. It's in my mind, anyway, because I was thinking when Lori Ann was talking about the storage component, we don't allow outside storage, do we? Because I know we had this conversation relative to the airport industrial park.
We don't allow the use of the outside of those pods for residential or business purposes. So, either people moving that might have storage can't have a pod on their property. In the instance of a business, they would not be able to use that for part of their business. But I'm not sure that Ms. Garmin, she may be able to better speak to the nature of her business, but that was not my understanding.
We have no intention of doing anything like that anyways. We already have a, we have a couple of storage units at All Seasons Storage, so right now, anything we get goes straight to there. There would be no outside containers of any kind on the property. We have no intention of doing that anyways, so...
Can I ask you a question? You said something about having the lot next door, you want to have outdoors. Tell me about that. What did you mean by that, outdoor?
Right now, it's just an empty grass lot. And so, our hope is to make it more family-friendly, put some benches out, maybe like a couple things for the kids, so when the parents are shopping, it's just a nice place.
Tell me about a playground, picking up cable.
Not necessarily a playground, but just like a nice area for families to hang out. In nice weather, we would like to do some outdoor shopping there, but nothing that's going to be left out overnight. If we put something out, it's going to be put back away before we even leave the property.
You're not going to have any container boxes or storage boxes or...
No.
Any kind of...
No, not of any kind.
Any other question? I am sensitive to that concern, and that's why I wanted to ask about. I thought that we had a policy in place already that would address it.
Well, and certainly, you, these are suggested conditions, and anything that you all feel that may additionally help the application be in conformity with the neighborhood, if you feel like it's necessary to add or revise, obviously, that's your right.
I'm not big on redundancy, and that's what it seems like to me, but if the council wants to include that as an additional condition, we'll vote on it.
I think that will be nice. I mean, I think that that will be a good thing, especially given the fact that neighborhood, it's, I mean, it's a neighborhood. It's not just a, it's not a business area.
And Elizabeth, in your presentation, you, and Lori brought this up, Lori Ann brought this up as well, the parking and backing out on Oakham Street, you know, that's a busy thoroughfare through there, and I would think that backing out on Oakham Street is not a good thing.
It's dangerous.
The only difficulty that she may have with removing all parking from the front, right now, I think in her drawing that was submitted as an alternative to the planning board's revision, she showed two handicap places on Oakham Street. Handicap parking has to be within a certain distance of the entrance, and there's only one entrance to this building. So, I don't believe she would meet the requirements for handicap spaces to be on the Third Street side. So, that's why she showed those there. And then, the remaining parking that would be required would be on the Third Street side of the building, where there's enough room between the building and the street to have parking spaces. So, then, they would be backing out onto Third Street rather than Oakham Street or Johnston Street.
I don't think backing out on either one of those streets would be a problem, but backing out on Oakham Street could be a problem.
And I should state, there's also room, the vacant lot she mentioned, and that's why the planning board put this condition. There's room, if the handicap person did not feel comfortable backing on Oakham, that they could use that vacant area to turn around and exit facing forward.
And what about your hours of operation?
We would like to do 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., because it is a retail store, and we would like to be open when people get off of work. We would like to not have to close so early so that they do have the option of coming.
And what about weekends?
Just Saturday is what's just 10 to 7.
Might be through Saturday. Okay, there you go. So, you said you've talked to the neighborhood about your business beforehand?
Everything on Johnston Street that would fall behind our neighborhood, we went out, we spoke with. There was nobody that had a problem, and we did also go over to Housing Authority to one of their monthly meetings and speak out there.
Now, I think, I think the parking spaces should be parallel to the street. I don't like the idea of backing out into the street. I think it gets a lot to back out into a street. I know at home, at home, normally, you have to back in the yard so you can pull out. If there's a handicap involved, you have to really be careful how they drive back in and back out. I think it's, I've seen that a lot. I don't know about the front, how you do that, and I don't know about the sides or the back, but there's a street both of them, right down the front. Both of it is, the property is close to the street.
Pictures here, don't do justice.
They'll use the back street on the back as much as they, as much as they do on Oakham Street. That's a busy street, and people go down there pretty fast.
Ms. Garmin would be required to designate the parking spaces in some manner and improve the parking surface, so there would be, I think there's gravel in the front existing, and that's where the parking for the other businesses that were located there was located in front of the building, and I imagine the church, they probably used the vacant lot. But if she were to put the parking spaces on the Third Street side, they would need to put down gravel and probably some, some means of delineating four spaces there.
Okay, we addressed the storage issue. We talked about travel in and out. Does this lend itself? We're going to add the storage on property as a condition, right? Is that your privilege?
I think Sambo brought that up here. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Is that, is that a voted-on addition, or we just by consensus?
According to Elizabeth, we already got that.
No, we're going to add something additional. We do have regulations in the UDO about outside storage, but if you wanted to add it as an additional condition...
Condition, yes.
So that you've got kind of a double layer of protection, then you would vote on your four findings with the amended...
Conditions.
Conditions.
And that would be an additional condition?
Yes.
Okay, so we address that first.
Yes. You decide on whether you want the additional condition first. Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, council members, the chair, I'm going to do this in the form of motion, so there are no questions. Chair would entertain a motion that we add the no storage on property recommendation to the list of conditions that have already been presented by the staff. Okay, we have a motion and a second to that effect. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will add that as an additional condition. All right. Now, we need to vote on the four conditions. They are in order. Number one, that this permit would not endanger the public health or safety.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right. Second condition, it must be voted on, that this action will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Third would be that this action will be in harmony with the area in which it is Do we have a second? Okay. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, and finally, would this business be in conformity with the land use plan, thoroughfare plan, and other plans officially adopted by the town council?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, we've heard from the staff already that they do find the proposed use to be in conformity with the Eden Land Use Plan, and we have this consistency statement, which I will read for the record, and it can just be inserted. This is the statement that has been presented to us, is in our packet, but for the record, whereas the council of the town of Edenton has considered the application for conditional use of rezoning from April and Craig Garmin, from R5 residential to CUCN, Conditional Neighborhood Commercial for Miscellaneous Retail, not otherwise specified, and finds that the conditional use rezoning, if enacted, will not endanger the public health or safety and will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, and is warranted to achieve and consistent with the purposes of the land use plan as explained by, but not limited to, the following goals and policies of the land use plan. And then, it goes on to recite those goals, which I think you covered in your presentation, correct? Okay. So, counsel, if you would, please offer up a motion that we attach this to our action.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right. The details are out of the way. Now, we would entertain a motion to accept the conditional use to the zoning as presented and discussed.
These are all the conditions, right?
Yes, with the conditions.
With the, I'm sorry, with the conditions, including the one we just added prior to this conversation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to do so. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right. Congratulations. We wish you a lot of success. Thank you for investing in our community and bringing a new concept of retail to the town of Edenton. We look forward to seeing what you can do there.
When do you intend to open?
Hopefully, by the summer, July, maybe.
Do you plan any renovations to the existing structure?
Not to the outside. The inside is kind of a mess. The floor got messed up from the church, so we'll have to get that fixed. And then, of course, we're going to put gravel on the outside in the parking area for now.
Don't forget to join the chamber.
Okay, that does it for our public hearings. Now, we go back to number one, which we purposely set aside at the outset for the benefit of our applicant. Now, I will call on Elizabeth again to present item number one. And we have as a guest again tonight, Mr. Dale Holland with the Holland Group, who has been assisting this community for several years with our planning and has been a tremendous help to our staff, and I think the results of his recommendations have been shown throughout the community, especially at the moment in the Oakham Street area, where that redevelopment zone is progressing nicely. So, look forward to hearing from him as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I will not have to fill your ears with quite as much detail for this one. You've gotten in your packet this really long list of amendments, and I'll just go over which sections they're going to be amending, and then I'll introduce Mr. Holland to speak more generally about the amendments that are enclosed. So, we are asking for a comprehensive text amendment to our unified development ordinance, amending, get ready, Article 1, general provisions. Article 2, basic definitions and interpretations. Article 3, administrative mechanisms. Article 4, permits and final plat approval. Article 5, appeals, variances, and interpretations. Article 6, hearing procedures for appeals and applications. Article 7, enforcement and review. Article 11, supplementary use regulations. Article 16, signs. Article 19, screening landscaping and trees. And Article 20, amendments. Also included is our amendments to your table of uses and an amendment to your appendix. As Mr. Holland will indicate later, most of these were just to bring our UDO into conformity with current general statute language or, so that we're in compliance. There were a few other local provisions or local changes that we asked for that Mr. Holland can detail, but one thing I did want to mention that came up between the planning board hearing and this meeting tonight, or planning board meeting and this hearing tonight, we had a inquiry about where tattoo parlors were permitted in the town of Edenton. And when that inquiry came in, I realized that we do not have that use in our use table. And contrary to how we used to operate or think was permissible, we used to think that if it wasn't listed in your table, then that meant it wasn't allowed in Edenton. Well, that's not true, and case law demonstrates that if you don't have a use in your use table, then you have to approximate the next closest use and allow that use within that zoning district. So, when that inquiry came about, we asked Mr. Holland to suggest some revisions to include tattoo parlors in our table of uses and supplementary use regulations that would be attached to that use. You are within your right to hear that proposed amendment tonight and make a decision on that as part of this larger amendment, or you can recommend that it go back to the planning board if you'd like to hear their opinion on it before voting on that, so you can treat it separately, but that's at your discretion. So, without further ado, I'll ask Mr. Holland to step up and speak to you.
Could I ask you a quick question, Elizabeth?
Yes, sir.
What you just said, if it's not there, they can do it anyway, right?
If there's nothing in our ordinance, we have to find the next closest use to tattoo parlors, and whatever district that is allowed in, then they would go through that, whatever procedure that is in those districts to be, to locate. Then, it would be up to me to argue, I think you fit in this use category, but they would have nearly as much arguing power to say, no, I don't think it's that use category. I think it's actually this one, which is, say, maybe in a more prominent zoning district.
I see. Okay. Okay.
Dale, please, sir.
Good evening. It's, as always, a pleasure to be in Eden. You have received, in your information, the revisions we've made, and you know from looking at it that everything that was highlighted in yellow is an addition. Or if there was a strike through in the text that you received, it means we deleted it. It had been some time, some time since there have been any revisions to your ordinance to make it compliant with current state statutes. So out of all those pages of yellow shading, 26 of those changes, the great majority of what you have before you as amendments to your ordinance are legislatively driven. So, not to be abrupt about this, but you really don't have a choice if you want to be consistent with the state statutes. I mean, we are, we're talking about items, just to give you examples, that have to do with guarantees on performance bonds, appeals, variances, evidence that's presented in evidentiary hearings before the Board of Adjustment, all of these things that, the 26 items that I mentioned are revisions to make you consistent with state statutes.
That includes your definitions of certain areas?
Yes, sir, the definitions too. I mean, we added definitions for agritourism, granny pods, tiny houses, and, and we had to add, we had to add a definition for agriculture, because you had a definition for bona fide farm, but the bona fide farm referred to agriculture, and there was no definition of what constitutes agriculture. So we, we had to add a definition of agriculture, which was all an outgrowth of legislative changes that, that had taken place. The legislature's actually doing a great job for the planning profession, because we keep having to make changes, because they keep changing the rules and the regulations. That, that's a selfish comment, but they nonetheless do virtually every year. Now, aside from those 26 items, there were, there were several things that we changed. On the table of permitted uses, you did not have a, in your current ordinance, any cross-reference to supplemental regulations. For example, in your existing ordinance for country clubs with golf courses, there was, there's some supplemental regulations that go with that. So there was no cross-reference between your table of permitted uses and where that supplemental regulation was located in your, or is located in your existing ordinance. So we added a column on the right-hand side that references those supplemental regulations. So if someone's looking at a country club or with a golf course, it tells them where they have to go to look for that supplemental regulation. Secondly, we added some permitted uses to, or uses to the table of permitted uses, being agritourism. That was legislatively driven, because the legislature added agritourism as a recognized use. Granny pods, which is something the legislature added to the, to the legislative provisions. And then at the local level, we added uses for N-I-N-N, rooming houses, tiny houses, microbreweries, and as Ms. Bryant just mentioned, tattoo parlors. And finally, in terms of specific use standards, which are all supplemental standards, we added some provisions for temporary uses. We clarified your bed and breakfast supplemental regulations. We added regulations addressing microbreweries, and we added some recommended standards for tattoo parlors. And in this case, tattoo parlors would be a conditional use in your industrial district. And then if you want me to review those specific requirements, I will be happy to. But that is what we have done to your ordinance. We started out with two or three things that we were going to change, and it just kind of blossomed from there through conversations with the manager and Ms. Bryant. Didn't cost you any more money than we told you it would, so we're still good with that. But it, it got a little more complicated than, than we thought it would. So that's why there is so much yellow in the text that, that we sent to you, I think.
And the green represents?
The green represents changes that the planning board made to the original text that we had submitted to them. Plus the tattoo provisions, which as Elizabeth mentioned, did not go before the planning board. That, that request for the tattoo parlor came in after we had already met with the, with the planning board. I don't, I don't think there's anything earth-shattering in here, but it does put your ordinance in much more current condition and consistent with state statutes. I would mention the granny pod thing I mentioned. Does, does everybody know what a granny pod is?
No. Is it on wheels? Is it a pod?
No, sir.
Okay.
That is, that is something that our legislature also did to us. And in a nutshell, what it means is that if you have someone who, under order of a doctor, is physically dependent upon you for care, that you can have a temporary structure in your backyard in which they can live, which would basically be an efficiency apartment. It has to be on a foundation, it has to be connected to utilities. It can remain there as long as that person has an annual statement from a physician that they are dependent upon the occupant of the principal structure for care. And it's, if that dependency goes away, the person moves, or the person were to pass away, then that structure has to be removed. So that, but that is mandated by state legislature. So even if you didn't adopt the granny pod provision, someone could still come to Eden and, and do it, because it's allowed by state statutes. So we're just trying to help the public, the people who try to read and understand this thing, that they have the right to do this. So, that's what a granny pod is. That wasn't a name we dreamed up.
Who pays for it?
Who pays for it? The person who owns the property or is providing the care. It's not a public expenditure.
Why would they have to move it?
Because that's what the state statutes say. If they are not, it's a temporary structure. Only as long as that person is dependent. And I think, to try to give you a better answer to that, is your ordinance allows one principal structure per single-family residential lot. So what we've got is two residential structures on one lot, if there's a granny pod there. So it's only allowed to be there as a temporary structure, and when the need for it goes away, then the structure is removed and you're back to one principal structure per residential lot on a single-family property.
So a small mobile home on that property would not be considered a granny pod?
No, sir.
Even though it was used for?
No, sir. It would not be. You know, granny pod, if, if you look on, on the revisions on page 11-5, granny pod can't be more than 300 square feet. It, it's essentially an efficiency structure. You, you got one room and maybe a bathroom, and the one room is a bedroom, living room, and kitchen. And, and the term granny pod, for what it's worth, actually came out of the state of Virginia, which was the first state that recognized these things. And there are actually manufacturers out there who earn their living off of building granny pods.
Sounds like they, a new opportunity for the Amish storage building builders, doesn't it?
I think our town attorney, he has a lot of questions.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going there, Mayor.
I'm just thinking as a citizen.
But that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you may have, but this is, except for those couple of things that were locally discretionary decisions, we, it's mainly legislatively driven. And I would like to thank Ann Marie and Elizabeth for all their help in getting this done.
I can see a lot of hours went into this work, I mean, this revision.
Sir?
A lot, many hours went into this revision.
My staff probably thinks more than I think. It, it, it wasn't as bad as it, it looks, but yeah, it took some time.
They didn't have to retype it. We didn't have a vision, so.
Elizabeth, I have to ask, do we have someone that wants to put a tattoo parlor in?
We had a call asking where in Eden tattoo parlors were allowed, and this was not just a, it was an in-depth conversation.
Remember, you had an issue with, and I'm going to get you, sorry, just with, with solar farms that, that basically, what situation is, is if Elizabeth or someone at staff level can't decide where a tattoo parlor is supposed to go, and I can't imagine anywhere we would put a tattoo parlor under the table of permitted uses the way it was, that you have to let them go anywhere they want to, if it's a legal use under North Carolina statutes, which tattoo parlors are. Most of the places that we work that have tattoo parlors listed have those, those facilities in a low visibility area, like an industrial district, and most always, they are listed as conditional uses, not permitted uses.
It's like granny pod.
Sir?
There's a law, I take it, that if I put a building on your property, and I hook up electricity and sewer to that property, and then I decide that I want to move it, I can't do it, because everything I put on your property hooked up belongs to you.
Well, I, not, that, that's a legal issue and not a zoning issue, because it depends. I mean, you could put a structure on a piece of property that might have the ability to be moved, such as a modular manufactured home that might be on the foundation but still could be used, and you could be leasing the property and owning the manufactured home and have the right to move it. So, it, it's, it's not a, that, that's, there's not a simple answer to that question. And I believe the attorney's here, I'd be happy to defer to the attorney. It, it, that goes far beyond just a question of zoning regulations.
All right. We thank you, sir. Does anybody else have anything specific they would like to ask of Mr. Holland? Again, thank you.
This currently updates our UDO, correct?
Sir?
This currently update, updates our UDO to the, to this date.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Subject to what our legislature may do in the next.
Yeah, and I was going to ask this question following this conversation. We need to put in some sort of review mechanism, so that we don't get 10 years from now another one of these. Is there a way that we can get input from the legislature through some channel that would allow us to do this as it occurs, as opposed to devoting this much time, energy, and effort to an elaborate redo like this?
Well, you, you can try to do it annually, but, but what, what we normally do is we suggest to our clients that unless it's something that's really earth-shattering, that you just wait and do it every two or three years. Because we, that way you advertise it all at one time, and you have the public hearing at one time, and you don't eat up all that time and expense. So Windsor's an example. We just did the same thing for Windsor, we just did for you, and it'd been two or three years since we'd updated theirs.
Can you tell us the last update?
Elizabeth, it predates Elizabeth, and I think...
Yeah, that's, that's what I, I just want to get in my mind, if three, if two or three years is, seems more reasonable, I'd just like to compare that to what our time lapse was.
It was significant, and it was because of, I think, lack of stability in the position. But now that Elizabeth is here, and has been here, and she attends the conferences and stays up with the changes, so I think that we'll, we're in a much better position to be able to do what Dale recommends and have updates every two or three years.
Yeah, you, you've had some break in continuity, so that's basically what happened here. It, it's not that Eden historically has been lax, it's just been this, this momentary
Okay. We thank you, sir.
Thank you. I will, I will go home and tell my wife that Harris is 47, so she can moan all night about how old she is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for your good work and your staff. We appreciate it. Okay, this, there will be a public hearing on this case, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to approach the podium, identify yourself, and almost hate to say this, we have 163 pages worth of stuff here, so if anybody has any questions or concerns about the material that's subject to this public hearing, please step forward, and we'll be happy to hear from you. And Mr. Holland is still here to help with any questions. Floor is open. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing relative to the changes in our text amendments for our UDO and forward, I mean, to entertain a motion to accept those revisions as this review.
Second.
Motion and a second to do so. Any further questions or comments? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, good.
Mayor, with the issue of the tattoo parlor, should we think about maybe referring that to the planning board to...
Was that, that was...
Was that in, was that in, I wasn't sure what was in there. Okay, great. Let's take care of it.
To me, it doesn't need any further conversation.
Okay.
Because we don't have it, and they can go anywhere they want to. So now that we've inserted it, it'll be subject to certain other requirements under the UDO. Okay. Moving now to... Stay with me a second.
Oh, nobody.
Okay, we're now down to hear from our committees from their last session, and we'll have our administrative committee to report first. Our chairman, Steve Biggs, is away at the North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual Conference in Hickory, so Anne Marie, if you cover this item for me, please.
Happy to, Mayor. At the committee meeting, the committee reviewed a, an offer from the North Carolina League of Municipalities and UNC School of Government to participate in the LEED North Carolina Fellowship Program. And that is, we are so excited about the impending opportunity for the town to have a full-time fellow, recent graduate of UNC, to live and work here in Edington and help us with special projects. And we've identified a number of planning projects, particularly focused on our redevelopment zone and housing issues, so.
We fund $10,000, and then there's a $29,000 dollar.
Yes.
Great, okay.
And the committee recommended approval, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Having heard that and the recommendation from the committee, Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved, Mayor.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further questions or comments?
Who gets the intern first?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right. Next, we'll hear from our finance committee chair by Councilman Dixon, please.
Let's see, we've got several things on tonight. First, it's recommended that the council approve the budget amendment for general fund fuel oil purchases as presented, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
Uh, second.
Okay, further questions or comments? All in favor, aye? Any opposed, no? All right.
Second, it's recommended that the council approve the debt management policy as presented, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Further discussions, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right.
Number three, I'm gonna ask Anne Marie to give us a quick breathing, she's done some walk-on visits.
Yes, we, the committee talked last time about proceeding with acquisition of the Hannibal Badham House, which is located in the redevelopment zone, and the structure is in continuing state of decline. The property owner lives in Maryland, and we've been working with her since October on trying to help her, and she's been trying to get contractors to give her estimates for the work that we've identified that has to be done to secure the house and prevent further decline. I told her that, you know, that we had given her several extensions, and that the time was now for the council to take action. She got in the car and drove from Maryland to meet with me, and she reviewed with me the various contractors in the region that she had reached out to and had been unsuccessful in getting any response. And she just pleaded for more time and for help. So we reached out to Reed Thomas with the State Office of Historic Preservation, and he sent us a list of about six or seven contractors in the region from here to Raleigh, a big region, as well as a few structural engineers, all of whom specialize in rehabilitation, historic restoration. So it's my recommendation that we, that you all defer any action for another 60 days. I told the property owner that I would recommend that, but that she needed to, you know, start working right away to get a budget and a plan, and she has solicited help. She has, I believe, a niece that lives in Elizabeth City who has agreed to help her, because you really need somebody locally, boots on the ground. It's hard to do all that work when you're out of state. So I think if we can give another 60 days, hopefully, she'll be able to pull it together, because they do wanna try and keep the house in the family. But I was by there today, and it's, it's really going down quickly.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we defer this issue 60 days.
Okay.
Do we need a motion, or can we just not vote all weekend?
I'd like to have a motion so we could have something referred back to because an extension asked for again, because if it is, and the place is falling down, we're gonna concern more about the condition of the building at this moment. Okay, I'm motion and a second to defer for 60 days. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, thank y'all.
Let's see, fourth thing we got is recommended the council approve the building reuse grant, the daedalus yachts as presented, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the reuse grant for daedalus yacht. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, thank you.
And the last thing we got is it's recommended the council approve the travel request for the North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual Meeting as presented, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, questions, comments? I will comment, but I hope we pass it, because it's already over. I'd hate for him not to be able to check out.
We didn't approve his travel.
Call him up, tell him he's gonna come back home.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Calling now on Councilman Stallings, who will report from the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. We only have one item on the agenda tonight, and it is recommended the council approve installation of sidewalk on the east side of South Granville Street to West Water Street to Dock Street as presented. I'll put that in form of a motion.
I second that one.
Okay, motion and a second to do that sidewalk project. Any further questions or comments?
I think it's a step in the right direction for pedestrian safety.
For sure.
Do you remember Sambo 20 years ago?
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, that carries. Now, we had our new business form, portion of the agenda for tonight, and Anne Marie, I would ask you to begin that conversation, please, with number eight, item.
Yes, sir. The first item, we're requesting council give approval for staff to formally submit application to USDA Rural Development for the financing of the street repair and resurfacing program. This would be phase two of your street surge program. Corey, the Public Works Director, and I met last week with the representative from USDA along with Derek Smith, the engineer with the Wooton Company that's been assisting you with this project. We're ready to rock and roll. We have to get USDA approval first, then Derek can bid the project, then we'll turn around and go to the LGC to get approval. And we have everything lined up pretty well. Virginia and I are scheduled to meet in mid to late June with the LGC staff. They wanna come down and talk with us again, and we're, they're working with us to get us on the September LGC agenda. And if, hopefully, everything will be in place, LGC will approve, and the contract you could proceed shortly after that with the repave.
You're probably looking at November, later in the year.
Well, it really depends on the, you know, the contractor and the weather, but we're hoping, you know, the LGC meeting is the second Tuesday of the month, so, you know, they conceivably could do the work in September, October. It gets dicey in November. They may, if they don't get it done by then, they would put it off to the spring.
The only comment I would make about that, Anne Marie, is let's make sure that we don't get in the same type of situation we did last year, where you get your fantasy unit and all the newspapers.
We're working on that.
That was not good. And it was through no fault of yours or ours, it was just one of those things.
Okay.
I am a woman, here be roar.
Did we get a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Okay. Second, please?
Second.
All right, thanks. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, D.
Mayor, Virginia has been working with the fire chief and the police chief on USDA application for financing for the mobile command unit for the fire chief and three additional police cars for the police department. This application, this pool of money, we believe we have a more than, you know, a good chance of getting some grant funding, so that's why we want to pursue this application at this time. And we would need council approval to submit the application.
Okay. Children, thank, all right, thank you.
Second.
Further comments, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, HP 399.
Mayor, this resolution was at the request of Councilman Dixon, that the town council formally go on record as supporting the North Carolina House bill that would really extend and expand the state historic tax credit programs, so.
And we've had more Pearl Capital than any other place in the state. I think this is just...
That's amazing. That really, that says a lot.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Do we have a resolution drawn up?
Yes.
Okay. All right, yeah, you did, I'm sorry. All right, any further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right. That was a battle last time.
It was. Hopefully, it won't be as difficult this time.
Mayor, I think enough factual data was provided to the opposition. Hopefully, it'll hold up. Okay, D, please, ma'am.
Mayor, Virginia, our finance officer has prepared a budget amendment, and it's really a budget transfer, because the funds are included in the Powellville Fund. We're just asking that you approve transferring the $48,000 that's in contingency to the repaving line item, and that would help pay for Lee Street, Barker Street, and Cypress Drive resurfacing.
But, it looks beautiful, if you're driving down Lee or Barker. Really looks good.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved, Mayor.
Okay. Motion and a second, questions, comments?
Is Badham on this?
Badham is on the list for the USDA street surge that hopefully will take place in the fall. Yes, sir. It's at the top of the list.
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Okay. Item E, we're being asked to adopt a resolution tonight. As we all know, Anne Marie's getting ready to take a medical leave, and in so doing, we need to have a designated, approved person to sit in her place while she's away, and we need to make that designation here tonight. So Anne Marie has invited our legal counsel, Hood Ellis, and Hood, if you would, review what that document is and how it affects the way we're gonna operate if it does at all, other than continue it on as is.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, it's pretty self-explanatory. The statute lets Anne Marie designate who will be the Atkins Town Manager in her absence, since she's a designated Tammy. But that is subject to your approval, and the resolution that you have before you constitutes your approval if you adopt it. Tammy will serve at your pleasure.
Okay, very good. Any questions about that explanation? Okay, hearing none. Chair would call for a motion whereby Tammy Whitley would be named Atkins Town Manager at the request of Mrs. Knighton, who's going on medical leave.
So moved. Second.
Further questions or comments? My only comment is, I know you do a good job. Had a lot of practice, right? Okay.
Good choice. Good choice.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Very good.
And Mayor, if I could, just, for the viewing public, that I'm expected to be out for three weeks, I hope to be back in mid-June, having surgery to repair a heart valve that is leaking, and I have known about this condition for a while, well, I've actually known I've had a funky heart valve since I was a little girl, and just thankful that my doctors have been monitoring, and I paid attention to some symptoms, and I know every, I'm gonna be fine, and I know you all are gonna be in great hands with Tammy and with the assistance from our, all of our staff, and particularly the department heads. So I appreciate all of your concern and support, and hope to be back here for the budget hearing on June 11th. That's my goal.
Please don't let that impede you. All right.
And she wants us all to come see her the day after the surgery.
No visitors.
Okay, very good. Council members, anyone have time, land, and import item or items you'd like to share with the group?
Yes, Mayor, regarding the group, you know, I know a month ago or six weeks ago, we were told by John Glover that, quote, "He wants to move forward with this project." Since then, has there been any, has he demonstrated any actions to indicate that he wants this to happen?
His architect has been in touch with us and has received all of the applications, and so one of the last things that I plan on doing before I go on leave is just nudge him to make sure that he gets all those submitted back to us.
He gave him until what, July 1st?
June 30th to close.
Mm-hmm. Think things can happen within that timeframe?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be tight, but they're supposedly working on it, so.
Just one other issue, too. I was reading Liz's report and about the housing code violations on 313 East Church Street. Are we taking any action against that particular boarding house operator?
The building inspectors are in constant contact, and one item may be repaired, and they're going in to look at that, but they're still, I mean, the list is long. So I think the owner will be addressing one item at a time.
Is there, on the end of that, is there a time when, or is that just...
That is something we can, I mean, there, that is something we can look at and consider. We'd have to review our town code to see if there's any way that we can set the date by which all remaining items must be accomplished.
I thought we did that.
That was a different...
Different one.
That was a different boarding house that was corrected.
Yeah, I was thinking like...
It's a block away.
This is, it's down the street.
All right.
A little bit further. Different.
200 block.
Okay.
Mayor, I had someone to come to me at the meeting this morning that we attended. Mayor, I had someone to come to me at the meeting this morning that we attended that thinks that we should put out more trash cans in some of these off streets, like First Street, Third Street, and Thompson Street, because there was so much trash and all in there. And he said people actually really truly do use those trash cans that we put out, but he was suggesting that...he just was the county commissioner that was proposing that.
Isn't that nice? We have put a little bit of extra money in the proposed budget to try to add some trash cans based on the recommendation that the chamber made, and then Corey's crew did a survey, so we kind of have an idea of where we need to supplement.
Made us one more thing. I thought Arbor Day was handled quite successfully.
Yeah, that was nice.
Very well done.
Your tree's still alive.
Has it been watered?
One week and counting. There we go. And I'd like to commend the fire department for their handling of the control burn over on Open Street. That was...it was interesting to watch as a bystander, and it's nice to have those buildings removed as well, so that'll open up an opportunity for someone to do, hopefully, another building project on those lots.
Heard a lot of positive comments about how the fire department handled that as well. A lot of positive comments.
That's a real hand saw and trainee program.
Yeah. I guess the greatest temptation is not to put it out, because your instruction is to burn it to the ground, right?
We had some of that this past weekend, though.
Oh, okay. Some real stuff, all right. Anybody else time and important? If not, I'll open up the floor to anyone here with us tonight that would like to make a comment or ask a question. Yes, sir?
Hi, Joe Liato, 116 West Gale. Just looking for a couple of updates. Number one, is it...do you have an update on the hotel? And number two, about a month ago, we'd all got this letter in our utility bills about the water again, that keeps getting delayed and delayed and delayed. I've been getting these letters for the whole three years I've been here. Can you provide some color around why this keeps getting delayed, and is September finally a hard date? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anne Marie, you want to address the...Corey, how do you want to address the water?
I'd be happy to address that. The contract has been awarded, the construction has started, the demolition work is still ongoing, vessels and materials have been ordered, and the September completion date for the Beaver Hill Water Treatment Plant is a hard date.
Good, thank you.
Appreciate your patience. It's been a challenge, mainly obtaining the various state permits that have been required for the project, but all that's behind us now and full speed ahead.
The hotel...the hotel is in discretion, the developers in discretion with banks. Banks have appeared on the scene finally. Three banks have been identified to the developer, and the developers have been in contact with each of the banks. That has been the missing piece for them. They needed a primary lender in their finance package, and up until now, they have not been able to locate or find or engage a lending institution. But they're very confident and feel very positive that from these three banks, there'll be a partner emerging, and I think it'll be fairly soon, quite honestly, Joe, because the dialogue with the developer has been more frequent and more positive than any other time during the course of this lengthy project.
So that's really good news on both of them, and I think all of you did hard work.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your interest. All right. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Is there any possibility that the streets in the Mill Village might someday get taken care of? They're not in really good shape.
Mayor, can I respond? I can...I don't have the list right here with me now, Pat, but I do know that several of the streets are going to be resurfaced as part of sewer repair work that is supposed to take place this summer, and then I do believe that one or two of the streets is on the plan for the Phase Two surge for the fall, but we'll get you a list of that. We've been...Corey and I have been swirling back and forth with the engineers, and I'm afraid to list specific streets off the top of my head, so I...
That's fine. Just nice to know that at some point, they will be in. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion of our agenda, which leads us to adjournment. So I will happily receive a motion to do.
So moved. Well, you got one.
All in favor, aye?